This is the one meeting of the year that I get to call the meeting to order because January is the time that we have to nominate and elect a board chair or vice chair. So first order of business before we do that is pledge allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So before we do nominations, it's perfect timing actually because we have two teachers here tonight that we'd like to recognize for receiving recognition. So first one is Jonna Stanton. She's up at the front. If she would just stand for a minute. Thank you. Jonna is a high school English teacher at Morse and she's been selected for the first annual Claudette and John Brazil Distinguished Educator Award. This prestigious award is sponsored by the Maine Council for English Language Arts to celebrate the contribution of two longtime educators who have inspired students and mentor teachers for over eighty combined years. This award recognizes Jonna for her demonstrated excellence in teaching, contributions to the profession, and commitment to the community. Congratulations Jonna. Next staff we have who chose to sit in the back of the room is Monica Wright. Monica, would you just stand for a second? So around the same timeframe Monica, who's a VMS science teacher, has been recognized as well. She's been honored by receiving the 2017 Everhard Field Environmental Educator Award. This award is administered by the Maine Environmental Education Association. The award is designed to recognize a teacher who incorporates environmental education into their philosophy and practice. Monica received this award because of her commitment to creating authentic learning opportunities for students, engaging them in their environment, as well as her dedication to reaching out into the community to create real-world learning opportunities. Congratulations Monica. Thank you both for being here this evening. You're free to leave anytime you'd like. This wasn't to be a penalty for you to come to the school board meeting. It was to thank you. We have wonderful staff here at RSU One. Every year when the main teacher of the year award comes out, all of our principals struggle with nomination process. We have many worthy educators in our district that do fantastic things and these are just two examples. But thank you for your time. Thank you for your effort and your dedication. So next up nomination of board chair and I would ask at this time for any nominations anybody has.
Mr. Superintendent, it's my pleasure to nominate Steve August for the chairperson of our committee for another year.
Have a second? Any other nominations? Chair or the vice chair? Okay, well, no, that's okay. What we'll do is we'll finish with chair and then we'll take a vote and then whoever is the chair, I'll turn it over to them and then we'll do the vice chair. So that's the protocol we'll follow. So any other nominations for chair? All those in favor of Steve as chair? Yes. Thank you. Congratulations.
I should say, you got me excited. Thank you very much. So item four oh, nominations and for the position of vice chair. I need a nominee pencil for vice chair. A second? Alan seconds. Any other nominations? All in favor? Lou, thank you very much. I had the opportunity to watch one of the tapes of our meetings broadcast. Dave Richards used to attend our meetings regularly and he would always, when I spoke, he would always point at me and say, "Your voice is dropping." It doesn't get picked up on the tapes. I'm going to try to speak a little bit more directly into the mic and hopefully my voice doesn't drop as much as it has in the past. I just want to make just a couple of comments. One, I know children at large are already blessed, but I think it's great that we do have such a committed and bright faculty in this district. I know the board doesn't take that group of teachers and administrators for granted, but the community at times might take them for granted, but they are a terrific group. I think we get more than our share of awards and recognition statewide and nationally for the things that we accomplish here in RSU One. So just have to congratulate what Patrick has said to Monica. I also wanted to just comment quickly on something that was in Jason's comments, Justin's comments on special ed. And that pertaining to unified sports program that's been launched here in the district. Before the meeting, Patrick commented that he's heard from some parents of kids participating in that program. They're very excited and pleased with what's going on there. And I think this is a, for those who don't know, unified sports, you know, virtually all developmental disabled kids and kids who are not disabled, partly with those kids who are going to athletic competition. What's accomplished there I think is terrific. There is a games annual for January 29th for the Hall of Fame here in the district. So it'd be great to have folks turn out for that game. The other thing I just want to mention briefly is that we, the board responded to a request from Brunswick School District just to indicate interest that we might have looking for ways to collaborate with that district. There was a rather unfortunate article that appeared in one of our open papers which indicated that this district and other districts had expressed an interest in consolidating with Brunswick. I know it was a misunderstanding part of the order. The transcript from Brunswick School meeting where the comment was made, it don't say anything about consolidation, but that's the way the press reported it. And I just wanted to assure folks that there has been no discussion of consolidating with Brunswick or any other district in this. And if we were to go in that direction, I don't foresee it, but if we were to go in that direction, it certainly involves extensive conversations with the communities of the RSU. We're not going to read about this in the newspaper. It will be a long discussion we have. But I just wanted to assure folks that there has been no expression of hope for consolidation of this district with Brunswick at this point. Okay, that said, item six point oh is approved and in minutes on December 18th meeting. Do I have a motion? A motion by Alan Second by Lou. Any comments on minutes? If not, all in favor of approving minutes is ready. Any votes? Thank you. Item seven point oh, adjustments to the agenda. We have a couple of adjustments. There is a BRTC field trip request and we'll make item fourteen point four. We do have a need for an executive session at the end of the meeting and so we'll make that item sixteen point two as before. Executive session will relate to student matters. Okay, item eight point oh is our first public session. This is an opportunity for any comments directed at items on the agenda. If not, can I? Nine point oh, we have a student presentation.
So I hope I get this right. You guys coming up to the podium here? We have Mary Moran here from Woolwich and we have Dean, who I'm not sure is contributing, but the idea came from a conference that Dean sent people to and I know Dean has been involved in this and behind the scenes. But for the presentation, we have Liza Fuller, correct? Glad I asked. And Jean Paul here tonight to do a presentation that I think you'll find quite interesting. And they're here to answer any questions that you might have as well as Ms. Moran. So welcome. And if you could, just speak as close as you can to that microphone so we can all hear you. Thank you.
My name is Jean and I'm Liza. And this is our boat and the faucet. So the faucet is on the road and it has no motor. It has a GPS inside it so you can track it. And so it may have fiberglass too, so it has a stirrup. So many boats would be encouraged to international relationships with people from across the ocean because it will sail through the ocean on using ocean currents and the wind. It might end up on the shore where schools there would come out and use it and fix it or add it to the water department. We would get, you know, like, we would be interacting with schools across the ocean. So some of the mini boats have sailed all around the world. So some places are Africa, Brazil, Panama, Cuba. So we both are boat sales at least to Ireland.
So there's a little compartment in the boat that our school, we put together a few things in there. Each grade put in a letter from some of the students, some about gear and just our school. And we all go to just say, "We are."
So our goal was to have our boat sail by 2018, but sadly we did not accomplish that goal. But she's on the way to Cape Cod right now with a ten-day show. And so we have like, we, the middle schoolers from WCS are going to write letters to businesses and see if they can sponsor the boat. And also the middle schoolers are going to team up with the daughter grades and write stories about the mini boat adventures and the faucets. And also it helps a lot social studies because you get to learn all about where else in it is the boat can go many places. So it might get, it's within ten days the boat should launch. It's launching up from Cape Cod. And once it launches, there's going to be a link on the website for RSU One from Woolwich where it is and where it's on. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thanks, thanks very much. Any questions for sailors?
So could you clarify, so you said it's going to Cape Cod. Is that because of the water currents or why is it launching from there? Or did I miss that? Where are you launching the boat from?
Just like Cape Cod, so it can get right onto the ocean.
Is that because that's where the ocean current is as opposed to, it wouldn't work too well right in the Gulf of Eden?
Kind of a follow-up question to that is who's launching the boat?
This one they don't know. Just ask. Educational Passages is the company that we've teamed up with to make the boats. And we wouldn't be able to launch from, we'd go beyond Georgia's dive if we went for Maine, which is a pretty hefty distance. So to launch it sooner, there's just a fishing vessel that goes out just far enough off Cape Cod. So we'll know more about the who and when within the next ten days of the presentation.
And did this, who actually built the boat? Was that?
So, well, we went to a presentation at our school by Mr. Wolfman who actually started the program about mini boats. And Ms. Moran.
Yeah, well, I did buy the boat. Mr. bought the boat. No, they actually worked with Maine Maritime, not the Academy and other places. And there's a lot involved in the students actually building the boats and then they kind of fine tune the other boat motors, mostly all in Maine.
That's great. That's great. Any other questions or can you come back periodically, maybe, you know, a couple of months and let us know where it is? Or at least give, or maybe you could put it in the newsletter just to, just so we could keep track of the boat as well. And what happens if it gets eaten by a whale or bitten by a shark?
GPS will just stay where it is.
That's great. That's great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any other questions? Thanks. Okay, so item ten point oh, committee reports. The High School Building Committee project update.
And we keep plugging along. We're having weekly meetings right now, excuse me, to continue to work on the interior, exterior, colors, just different questions that people have. Anything from bikeability, walkability to the building, to how much storage we have for athletics and PE. So we're starting to get down into the details. Our two architects are meeting with staff, you know, every other week. And starting in February, we'll start meeting on a, you know, every other week basis as I go through here. I do have a handout that I'll distribute to you that I got from Ron recently. But just to give people an idea, in April and May is when we'll go back to the DOE just to get approval for everything with the site bid. And we'll go out and we hope that one company that we'll award the bid to that will start the site work in June and July here. So we go back this Thursday to the Department of Education for another check-in with them. But right now, everything is moving ahead like it should.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick and Randy to the High School Building Project? Finance committee update. We'll do that. We, the finance committee met, I think it was last week, with Hank from our auditor and he went through the audit findings with us. Once again, it was a clean audit. As I typically say, at this point of the year, we should be really very thankful that we have a finance group in the central office that does our finance work. It's mostly Deborah and now you have an assistant, but it's a one and a half person staff, I think, right?
With a lot of help from Vida.
With a lot of help from Vida. And what they accomplish there is really amazing. To come out with a positive, clean audit is really something that we should be very proud of. I want to give recognition for that to where it's due. So thanks Deborah, anger staff. Now we can say anger staff for that effort. There are a couple of things to keep in mind that will certainly come up. Some will come up in our budget discussions. One issue that we've been dealing with since I've been on the finance committee has been the internal controls issue, which we always get some caution from the auditor. Essentially that's because we don't have one person doing the job. And they prefer to keep some of the functions within the finance office separate, but we don't have that luxury. So that issue continues to come up. It's not favorable in a way. And the other thing, just to, that Hank pointed out, allowed two things actually. One, there was a, our spending was high in the area of special education, which is not unanticipated. I think as all of us know, you know, just one or two students requiring services outside the district or even within the district with one-to-one service can really throw our budget off. So there was a little bit more spending in that area than we at least anticipated at the beginning of the year, but we'll deal with that during the budget cycle. And the other is our continuing struggle with school lunch, with the school lunch program. For Halloween, we did transfer money out of the general fund to try to pay that deficit down. And we did pay the deficit down to some extent, but it's going to be a long-term. I think our conversation with Hank at the finance committee really made it clear to me that this is going to be a long-term issue that we're going to have to deal with to bring school lunch into a, you know, into a place where it isn't going to require general fund transfers to help out. And I know Tim's working hard on this issue and hopefully we'll get a little bit of a turnaround. And I do certainly need to point out that this is not a problem that only confronts the RSU. I mean, it's a problem statewide with probably ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of districts statewide. It's very difficult to run a school lunch at a pay-as-you-know-this. So during budget, we're going to have to probably look at that deficit in the school, in the school lunch account again. But all in all, it's a good line. Thanks Deborah for that. Okay, that's my finance committee report. Ten point three, Katie, report on curriculum assessment instruction.
Hi, everyone. I actually have a very short report tonight. I know last meeting I spoke for a long time about various things. So just to catch everyone up, we do have a consultant who helps us with science. That comes out of our Title II grant. Her name is Joyce and she works with Maine Math and Science. And I just wanted to update you that she's now been here twice this year working with a group of teachers for our work in grades K to five to make sure that we're ready to teach the next generation science standards, which haven't officially been adopted by the state, but they're hopefully soon to adopt them and most districts are already using those. And so I just wanted to let you know that that work is going really well. The money we're spending is very well spent. She's a great facilitator. And what our plan is, is the teachers who are currently on the committee are creating one and next-gen science standard unit for each grade level. So there'll be one kindergarten, one first and so on up through grade five that the rest of the teachers in grades K through five will pilot next year. And so that's our plan with that work so far. Last board meeting, I spoke about our whole teacher evaluation system. And you said you wanted periodic updates. And so I just wanted to let you know that our steering committee has not met since I last talked. However, we will be meeting for a half day this Wednesday to develop our SLO, Student Learning Objective. Those are the targets related to student growth that tend to be a sticking point in a lot of districts for various reasons. We're going to be working on those next Wednesday and so next meeting I'll have more to report out on those. And I just kind of wanted to follow up on a budget item that I brought up when we had our meeting when we were going through various needs for next year is that, I wasn't sure I spoke about this, but we will be looking into refocusing our efforts, not on writing, but on reading next year for the elementary grades especially. I talked about that in terms of the consultants we'll be using. And I wanted to let you know that one of the big needs that the teachers are really interested in is more resources and supplies for reading instruction. And so while I have no, you'll be happy to hear, no big budget items to break forward this year, I just wanted to plant a seed that come this spring I'll be starting an ELA, English Language Arts Committee, grades K to five, for teachers to go over what we're doing with reading, writing, spelling. And I'm pretty positive that from what I've already heard, what will come out of that is the need for more reading resources, which will be a big budget item and request potentially for next year. So I just kind of wanted to plant that seed now. And the last piece to discuss is, I know you also wanted periodic updates on homeless students. And since our last meeting, we actually unfortunately had five new homeless students. So we're up in the high thirties right now for our numbers, which I think is, from what I can tell from the data I have, one of the highest numbers we've had unfortunately so far as a district. So just something to think about in terms of our resources. I've met twice now with the Bath Housing Authority and they've actually been really helpful in terms of, oh, sorry, just giving me some ideas when I do speak with families who do have housing insecurity of what resources to connect them with, rather than us just doing the usual, we are required to give you free lunch and breakfast and transportation. But here are some of the numbers. You can call knowing if they're a veteran, what other resources I can tell them to go to. And so now I feel confident that I have a much better list of avenues to help some of our families at least start to know where to go to ask for help, which is good. But I have a lot more to work to do on figuring out the best ways to support them. And that's it. Questions?
Any questions for Katie? Just on the homeless, when you get a homeless, you know, when a homeless kid comes into the district, I mean, obviously typical. I mean, are you able to identify school, do they come with school records for previous, this district?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think getting student records, as far as I know, are usually an issue. And it's actually not usually new students to our district, it's students who live here, who are already in our school, who lose their housing stability. So they're already our students. They might end up living somewhere else, and so we need to make sure that if they're now in a shelter in Brunswick, we are still getting them to school here, for instance. So that's a pretty typical situation. There are lots of students who are our students that are doubled up with another family somewhere. We have a few students who, you know, are living in Bath and might actually be going to Brunswick, because that's where they originated, but the idea isn't for students to move schools with every time their housing isn't stable and they have to move. The whole idea of the McKinney-Vento legislation is to have that be the one stable thing, and so the records really aren't the issue, because the idea is that the student, wherever they start the year, finishes the school year at that place. And so it's more making sure that we're getting them the things they need, so they can continue to stay at the same school.
Sure.
Katie, so what happens at the, so for example, if someone is a student here, then they're at a shelter in Brunswick, and you end the year, and they're still in Brunswick, are they still in our district?
There are a series of three things, and I won't bore you with all the details of the three main questions you ask, but if they're, essentially if their housing is still unstable, and they want to continue at our school, they continue so. If they found permanent housing in a new place, then they would have to start going to school in that new place.
Thanks. Thank you. This is a, it's really a good, a trusted point of the demands that fall to schools in our time, and, you know, I went to school a long time ago, and if, I'm sure there were incidents of homelessness back in the fifties and sixties, but you weren't, I wasn't aware of it for sure. And in terms of thirty, you know, identifying thirty kids within our student population, I really hope that, you know, I hope the situation, you know, that whatever conditions or factors contribute to that situation, as an impact to the kids is, or you know, the guilt in some way, but it's just a luxury of how much responsibility that falls to the school, to the district, in terms of all the different issues and challenges.
Right. That's very true.
Okay, thanks. Any, no comments? So eleven, eleven oh, we hit the Student Board Representatives Report, and this is a new item on the agenda, and I think it's a terrific addition to the agenda, and Sarah has agreed to give it. I think this is something I hope will become a regular part of our agenda as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I'm also too. I'm sad that Sydney, my, the other student representative isn't here tonight, but I, I mean, I don't have too many things to say, just because it's the end of the semester, and just had midterms, and the summer semester starts tomorrow, which is kind of crazy. It's like already, you know, half a year is gone. The snow day that we had last week didn't seem to mess with midterms too much. I actually think, I was hearing from a lot of students saying that they appreciated the extra day to study. And I've also been noticing that a lot of seniors are heading back to colleges or finding less in their applications, and that some of the juniors are starting to look too. And I just think, I remember last year, when I was a junior, that I was starting to look, and I was seeing all the seniors getting their decisions back and things, and it's just, it's an exciting time for juniors and seniors. And, yeah, and hopefully that all of the decisions that all the seniors are going to be getting are what they want, and that's about it.
Thanks. I'm just curious, I know, I know at some point, I'm trying, now we've kind of shifted to the new high school, the new project, but I know at one point, because I saw you talking to the architect, this goes back several, maybe several months ago, but we shared some of the, some of the early thoughts on the design with you. Is there any conversation or discussion among the student body of the new, of the new high school?
Yeah, a little bit. You know, it's mostly like students wondering and being a little bit sad about what's going to happen to the theater, and what's going to happen to the pit and stuff, because it's just very important to the student body. We all kind of, we just cherish those two spots in the school, and so people are just like, what's, what's going to be the replacement to that, and how can we remember that? And I, I think that it would be cool if we took some of the, some of the things that are in the theater and put them in the theater, like the dead end, some top of the theater, because I've just heard lots of people, that it's just very sentimental to alumni and students. But that's, I haven't really, I haven't heard much about the other parts of the school.
What do you want to say, because it seems to me that in discussion of the new school, we are, we are thinking of taking some of those things out of, why don't you go ahead?
It's a good way to discuss about it, because there's real acceptance on the part of the building, to the concept of bringing some of all more smaller materials. So it's not something that is, whether it will be everything that the student body loves, I'm not sure, because there's a practical part to it. But Ron O'Malley, the design engineer, has been very conscious of it, very sympathetic to it, and he surprised me at times when I walked past a beautiful mosaic in the hallway, and I mentioned it to him, and he said, I think we can bring that over. But he, he's very receptive to that, so that was something that I was just hoping, so we could sell it and bring it over. And I'm not sure it's a priority with the student body, but it was with an old fellow looking at it on the wall, saying, that's beautiful, can you save it? And the PM had discussed.
And the back wall?
He talked about taking a photograph of the back wall of the stage, where all the autographs are, generations of students. He talked about being able to take a photograph like that, blow it up, and bring it up to the new facility, lying it to the back wall. He actually talked about a toy, which would bring all of those autographs and all those many generations of students, participating in the theater, into the new theater. Do you want to forget? I think, you know, I think it would be a really good idea if Ron could meet with a group of students again, and update him on what's being discussed, and what he's trying to incorporate in response to his meetings with them previously. I think it would be a good thing, the superintendent, to have, have Ron meet with a delegation of students and explain what's being done, particularly the things that they felt were very important to them.
That's a good thought. Maybe we can talk tomorrow and see what we can.
Can you share one person, that you had here a little earlier, and people some students over at the high school? I think it's time for that to occur, especially if the kids are talking about it.
The last thing, and I also want to say, it's not all negative what the students do, like everybody's really excited, and especially students that have younger siblings who will be experiencing, they're all just kind of, oh, this is so exciting and stuff, so it's also that too.
Last response I got from a student was, all right, don't stop. And that was having a very tough time, running the camera, and I said, you're going to be in the state, a student in the new school. He said, yeah, all right. So let's make sure that we continue to work on it, all the students, all right, that's what we're taking for.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Sarah. Okay, eleven, twelve point oh, superintendents report.
Just a couple of updates. The SREP program, which is our regional behavior support program with the other districts, it's, it's, she's got a River Educational Program. We're very creative. But we hired a special education teacher and a social worker, and you saw from the justice report that we've had four students that have been referred to that program. We have two that are enrolled, and we have two that will be enrolled, could be by the end of this week. And then there's two other students from one of the other districts, and there'll be more coming. So we are currently looking for ed techs to help with that program, and those are being advertised right now, and we're working with a company as well. BRCTC Student of the Semester, just a reminder, if you just, I know some of you can't make this time, but nine o'clock on February ninth, it's a Friday, is a Student of the Semester Breakfast, and it's just a nice event that's held in the Culinary Arts, kind of like, at nine o'clock? Uh, February ninth, it's a Friday, and it's held in Miss Baldwin's area, and, you know, parents will come, and the teachers will say something about each student as receiving the Student of the Semester. So it's, it's a nice event if you can stop by. Just put it out there to you, I know Anita's the newest board member, but we used to do board walkthroughs, where we would have a time during the day where you could sign up for a school that you'd like to just come, meet with the principal, and then the principal would give you a tour of the building. I kind of just talked about some things that are going on in the building, so if you'd like us to organize board walkthroughs, even for those of you that are veterans that would like to go to a school where we have a new administrator, or you just have an interest in one of our schools, you know, please just contact me or I, we can coordinate those. Last thing is just the Morse High School Principalship. We closed applications last Friday. I think we had, I don't know, twelve to fifteen applicants, so Katie and I are going through those now, and we have an eighteen-person committee, so it's fairly big. Hopefully it won't be intimidating, but we did want to have a broad range of representation, student, parent, board member, staff, you know, other community members. So our goal is to interview the week before February vacation, so that we can find out if we have a good fit there, and if we, if we do, then we would do a second interview, possibly, or a site visit. If we don't have the right fit, then it gives us time to go out and re-advertise and still be ahead of the game versus other districts. So that's what we are with that. And that's it.
Thanks, Patrick. Just, just as a judge of, how could we honor, how far ranging was that, fifteen today?
Did you get a chance to look at it today? You did? I, in geography-wise, you're talking?
Yeah.
I honestly didn't pick up on that. I was in kind of a hurry to say, hey. Yeah, I think, I think New England was, you know, as far as the span that went, I don't think we had anybody from, yeah.
Okay, but it's a good broad representation. Interest, I think. Good, good. Who's representing the board?
Alan, okay. So we have, well, Tim is another administrator of the district, former board member, is also on the committee.
Thanks, Alan.
Twelve point two, Andrew report.
Okay, tonight, we are looking at December, which is halfway through the year, and for expenses, we've spent eleven million dollars out of our twenty-eight million dollar budget, which is about thirty-eight percent. Once again, special education, we're going to be keeping our eyes on that, because that's always a challenge. If you look on the financial report, our projected percent spent is ninety-eight percent, and that doesn't include tuition and make care. Just received notice this past week on our next make-care reductions, and for two quarters, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So Justin and I are going to sit down and look at all the tuition and see where we're at, but that will be an area that will keep our attention. Revenue, we're at forty-eight percent, and tuition rates were set by the state, and our elementary rate is up three point five-three percent, and secondary was up six point oh-nine, and that means more revenue for us coming in, because we're a receiving district now, pretty much, instead of sending district, so that's good for us on the revenue side. And finally, Morse High School Project is underway. We're drawing down on the first ban, and as of right now, we've spent about a million dollars on the project, so that first ban came in, we'll pay back the general fund, some of the monies that we used to carry as cash.
Yep, thanks, good question. Yep, the board, folks at the board will remember, we've been borrowing from the general fund to pay ongoing expenses for the work, that's the reason, expenses, so that, that big draw down, we've got to pay ourselves a nap for those general fund transfers and expenditures.
Twelve point three is the fundraiser request, I don't think there's any discussion, but this is just a package.
No, it's just twice a year, FYI, once in August, September, and then now, and, you know, just if you had any questions, or if you ever have concerns in the future that we as a district are asking too much of our communities as far as fundraising goes, that's the only reason we give that to you. So there's really no action on it.
Okay, thirteen point oh, old business. Thirteen point one is review of the two thousand seventeen, fifteen board goals. We could ask Jen to kind of lead, lead our, lead that conversation, she's not here tonight, but essentially, we've accomplished goal one, or as part of goal one, the November referendum, still involved in other aspects of the construction project, obviously, we'll continue that after the communications plan, you know, we'll, 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 we've got to put some things on, like, in support. Okay. Activity on that is, is not before, and RTI will get a presentation at some point in the near future, and we'll continually get updates and improve our understanding of the teacher evaluation system, which is a level one of the goals, so we're going to work on it. Thirteen point two, we have an action item. We have a second reading of, second reading of policy J L C D E, which is medication administration on school field trips. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Bill Second, by Megan. Any discussion? All favor? Analysts? Fourteen oh, fourteen point oh, new business. We have Patrick provided a list of committee assignments for board members, and just take a chance, take time to review your assignments, your, call, your qualifications, as far as committee responsibilities go. Patent-free library, Anita has offered to take that over, replace Patent-free library, Anita has offered to take that over, replace Megan, so we'll submit her name to Wesley Donner, the director of the library, and Megan is thinking of, you know, but to be a liaison to that committee, but we do need some more information on that, so maybe Patrick, I'm trying to get you.
Yeah, I can, I can have Tim reach out to you, because he's the rep right now, and he was pretty involved, he can give you the schedule, and so I'll have him reach out to you. And then Bill, we will be having a meeting in the next, probably sometime this spring for the, you know, for the drop-off intervention one, I know we haven't had that before, but we will be starting that up.
Okay, this is a quarter of the vote. Yeah, is there anybody who wants to move off one of the committees that you, we'll go forward, this is a change, we just talked about it. Thank you. Fourteen point two, we have a overnight field trip request for more students to compete in Special Olympics, and the dates of this trip are January twenty-eighth through the third, so obviously, the snowshoe train. Do I have a motion to approve?
Just a question, do we lease or rent a man for the road to Mango?
It would be through Bat Bus Service.
I see.
I believe he's taking two students up, and it is for competition socially.
We have a motion to approve the request. Second? Second? Is there a move, all in favor? Any opposed? We have another, here, garrote tea that was in your packet. This is a March trip to Bangor for Skills USA. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alan, second by the, all in favor? Any opposed? Second? Second, this is Patrick. Thirteen point oh, is your second public session, is anyone moving the rest of the public at this point? Okay, thank you. Sixteen point oh, next meeting dates and locations, our next scheduled meeting is February twenty-sixth here at Bath High School, six o'clock. Okay, that concludes our business. We do have a need for a second, a second executive session, so we'll move that, executive, we'll move the enter executive session pursuant to section four oh five six A, and it's a we're going to discuss a student in the academy, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? We will come back to a regular session to ensure, but there won't be additional business conducted after that. Thanks.